At this time, I will reconvene into open session. This meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 18th, 2022, beginning at 7:16 o'clock. That just sounds weird. At 7:16. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present in the administration building. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're happy to have the audience and those that are online. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with an opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Raich in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and rightful, with diligence to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Dr. Raich. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Now we come to open forum for agenda items. As stated in the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest. No later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any registered speakers?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Assistant Principal for Bolles Junior High, Assistant Principal for Gunn Junior High, and Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, and Assistant Principal for Shackelford Junior High, Assistant Principal for Workman Junior High, Assistant Principal for Young Junior High, and an Assistant Principal for Sherrett Elementary. Yes, discussed.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratification?
I move that we accept the administrative recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Raich. All vote in the affirmative, and the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Fowler. And so we'll take a little moment to introduce these wonderful individuals who have already started, because this is a ratification. And I visited with many of them recently, and they were so excited. I hope they're still excited. We are in the fourth day of school now. But, all right, so we'll start with the Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Dr. Mara Álvarez. If you would stand up, yes. Absolutely. And Dr. Álvarez attended the University of Puerto Rico for Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, and you'll see all the information there, but we'll go through some of this. UT Arlington, Master of Ed in Mind-Brain Education. Wonderful program there. UT Arlington for a doctorate in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, our dual-language specialist at Wimbish World Language Academy, has taught fourth grade in Grand Prairie, fourth-grade dual-language math, science, kinder, and fourth grade also in Fort Worth ISD, and sixth grade and pre-kindre dual-language. Dr. Álvarez, congratulations and welcome to Lamar. Next, the new Assistant Principal for Bolles Junior High is Monique Tarver. Monique, congratulations. Monique attended the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Marketing, Lamar University for Master of Ed in Ed Administration. Most recently was the Assistant Principal at Crouch Elementary School. And you see all that wonderful background there. Data analyst, campus testing coordinator in different schools, elementary math coach, third and fourth-grade teacher, and a third-grade teacher at a different campus. Monique, congratulations and welcome. The new Assistant Principal for Gunn Junior High, Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy is Amanda Murray. Well, there you go. So Amanda attended the University of North Texas in Denton for Bachelor of Arts in Television and Film, Texas Women's University for Master of Ed in Reading. Most recently, an instructional coach where at Gunn Junior High, of course. Has been an avid teacher and coordinator at Gunn, an English Language Arts and Reading teacher-coach at Gunn. Congratulations, Amanda. Welcome. All right. Our new Assistant Principal for Shackelford Junior High is Janie Nelson. Janie attended the University of North Texas in Denton for Bachelor of Arts in Communication Studies, UNT for Master of Ed in Special Education. Most recently, an Assistant Principal in the Soto ISD. You'll see her information there. At the Technology Magnet Academy and at an elementary school as well. Has served as a Language Arts Resource Teacher at Bailey Junior High, and has been in Denton ISD as a third- and fourth-grade inclusion teacher. Next is our Assistant Principal for Workman Junior High, Dr. Nanita, Nikita, sorry, Bernard. There you go. I'm going to get this right. Nanika Bernard. I hope I got it right. Bachelor of Arts in English and Master of Business Administration, and you see her credentials there. Texas M. University in College Station for Doctor of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction. We have, yes, we forgot about that. I should have gone faster. I should have gone faster. Okay. And most recently, an account executive, but has also been a Director of Advanced Academics at Duncanville ISD, Director of Assessment and Accountability, a principal in Duncanville, principal in Grand Prairie, Assistant Principal in South Grand Prairie and Grand Prairie High School, an English One teacher, English and Social Studies teacher. She's done just about everything. And now, coming to Arlington ISD as our Assistant Principal there at Workman Junior High, Dr. Bernard, welcome. Next, the Assistant Principal for Young Junior High, Yolanda James. Yolanda attended Alcorn State University for Masters, I'm sorry, for Bachelor of Science in Agribusiness Management. She'll tell us someday about that, but not today. Okay. Concordia University, Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the Assistant Principal at PRC STEM Academy. And I know they miss you there, because you've been there, you were there a while. Keller ISD, Assistant Principal before, in the past as well, Academic Associate in Keller Middle School. Has been an Assessment and Data Analyst Testing Coordinator in Fort Worth ISD, third- and fourth- and fifth-grade teacher as well in mathematics and science. Yolanda, congratulations. Absolutely. Well done. Last but not least, our Assistant Principal for Sherrett Elementary is Tara Lane. Attended Texas Tech University for Bachelor of Arts in Radio, TV, and Film, Concordia University, Master of Ed in Ed Administration. Most recently was our Campus Testing Facilitator at Crowell Leadership Academy. Has been a student support interventionist at Starrett and at Wimbish, special ed teacher at Miller as well. Ms. Lane, congratulations and welcome. As you can tell, we have a variety of individuals that come from within the system, have grown in their leadership, and moving to new experiences, and then people coming from outside the district as well that have finally seen the light to come to Arlington ISD. So congratulations to all these appointees, and your leadership is very much appreciated. So thank you.
I would just like to say how pleased we are to have you. If you're new to AISD, thank you for joining the family. If this is a promotion for you, thank you for staying in the family. As you know, in AISD, we get many, many, many applications for every position. You have been selected because we feel like you're the best fit. We appreciate your skills, your leadership, and don't forget, you were selected because we believe in you. Thank you so much for being with AISD. There's also, we have a photo opportunity out in the foyer where we have a backdrop for you. If you would like to go out and get your picture made with family or members from your school, that would be awesome. We'd love for you to stay this evening, but I know you have school tomorrow. So you are welcome to stay or leave, whatever you feel like doing, but make sure you get your picture out front, and thank you for being here. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring as an action item, consideration of a resolution. This deals with a bond defeasance and/or redemption resolution. And I'll ask Ms. Moss to introduce this topic, and we also have an expert here, Mr. Williford, who'll join us in this discussion. But Ms. Moss, would you kick off this item, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Vassos. President Fowler, trustees. As Dr. Vassos said, we have Mr. George Williford of Hilltop Securities here tonight, and as you know, he works closely with the district on bond sales and refunding. And he also worked with us last year on the redemption that you approved for two of the bonds that we had that were callable as well, saving our taxpayers in interest. We also work with him on projecting our values and modeling out our INS rate. So that's why we're bringing forward this resolution to you tonight for your approval. There are some changes to this year's tax rate calculation in the form that we use to calculate our INS rate. So he is here to share some more detailed information with you on that item. We've also talked about our bond sale that's coming up in February, so he'll give you some insight on that as well. So I'll have George come and lead you through that.
Ms. Fowler and Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be back. As Darla said, for the record, George Williford with Hilltop Securities. We serve as financial advisor to the district. And as Darla indicated, and just to kind of give you a little bit of background, most districts prefer or try to manage their INS side of their tax rate, and in most cases, keep it as steady as possible, and so on. And that's particularly important when you're a district like Arlington, where you haven't issued all your debt with no looming plans or whatever. In fact, you still have planned issuances from the authorization you have. And so year to year, values are going to change. And of course, we have modeled based on assumptions and tax rate and so on. But it kind of creates a large problem in part that while you might could reduce the INS rate somewhat one year, but then to accommodate future issuances, it might have to go back up. And so those are the reasons districts try to maintain and manage it as closely as they can. With values increasing this year, and like Darla said, they changed the truth in taxation proceedings, made them a little more rigid and formal. And so in order to maintain the rate, whereas in the past, districts would just say, well, and I failed to mention, Article or Section 45.001 of the Education Code says that a district can set a tax rate for debt service and set that rate on or before when the payments are due. And so that has been interpreted literally since 2009 as meaning you could set a tax rate for current year's debt service and/or future years. In the past, districts would just set the rate where they needed. There might be excess INS revenues materialize and so on, and then might build up over, you know, a two- or three-year period before it would be used and applied toward debt service. The new procedures actually have a line item where you have to report any excess revenues from, for instance, this year, next year that weren't used. And so working with a number of districts, working with a number of bond attorneys, different law firms, we determine it's better than just setting the rate, moving down the road to formalize it, and before you get to the point of setting your tax rate, actually adopt a resolution. And it, again, is very gentle. It's not specific as to which bonds will be redeemed, how much or whatever, because that needs to be after collections are fully in hand, and Darla and Carla identify and report, well, here's how many dollars we actually have that could be used above current year's debt service. We have a real good idea at this point, and it was what was used in calculating what will be the recommended rate and so on. But at any rate, the recommendation has been that districts actually act on a resolution like you have, delegating to finance staff during the fiscal year to make a determination about which bonds and how much to use toward defeasance. So that's generally what you have before you. Unlike a lot of districts that maybe don't have bonds that are callable this current year, they're having to put the money into escrow for an actual defeasance, where it stays until they're callable on an invested basis and then redeem the bonds. The calculations in the case Arlington so far worked out very closely, where you have a 2014 issue that has 4 million, I believe it's 500, 4,670 of callable principal, and the money that's going to be generated and likely excess to keep the tax rate up would be used February 15th or thereafter to outright pay off that principal. And just to let you know, if that's all that's done, that will reduce future year's debt service by 6.35 million using 4.67. And so what that means is that would be a net interest savings over the life of what those bonds would have been of 1,689,000. So very good use of money to pay off debt early and avoid future interest carry and so on. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and like I said, we would recommend considering and approving this resolution.
Any members have questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I would like to offer a motion, please. I move the approval of the resolution directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain Arlington Independent School District's outstanding unlimited tax bonds on one or more occasions. Motion. Am I on? You do this for the harder motions. I appreciate that. Okay, let's try that again. I move for the approval of the resolution directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain Arlington Independent School District's outstanding unlimited tax bonds on one or more occasions, appointing an authorized officer, and delegating to the authorized officer the authority to make all determinations required to officiate such defeasance and/or redemption, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
A second. Thank you, Ms. Mays. I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, and a second from Mrs. Mays. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. McMurray. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Willbanks. We're having technical difficulties. We will do a hand vote. Dr. Raich?
Vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks?
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. McMurray?
Sarah McMurray, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Ms. Mays?
Ms. Mays, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks? Mr. Hibbs?
John Hibbs, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any items to be withdrawn?
Oh. Discussion. Discussion. We now move on to discussion item eight. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring as a discussion item, TRS Active Care update. So as you recall from last year, we had the opportunity to form a group and a committee to really review whether we should continue with TRS Active Care. State law changed to where you can actually get out of the TRS Active Care upon careful consideration, and that opportunity comes up in December. That time, we discussed the whole timeline for that process and getting input and all that kind of good stuff. And so we have members of committee here to give us an update, including Mr. Kale, to give us an update on where they are in their work, the input they've gotten. And before they do that, a sincere thank you to them, as you represent the committee. I know it's been a lot of different learning and opportunities, and you're still excited about it, it seems, because you're smiling. But you're going to take us through the long haul on this for our decision, ultimately a recommendation back to this board, whether we get out of TRS Active Care. It's a big decision with all the employees that we have and things like that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kale to lead us through some of this presentation and then introduce and get us going.
Will do. Thank you for giving us the time tonight, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. We are actually really pleased. This is a technical and involved subject, but it's a really important subject, as it provides for the health care of our employees. So the number of items that we're going to go through will go as quickly as we can on the agenda tonight. Overview of Active Care. I know it's been a few months since we've talked, and so just a little bit of backstory on the larger subject. Upcoming changes to TRS Active Care. Considerations of opting out or staying in. The district's approach to trying to get feedback as we consider those decisions and make suggestions for recommendations to the board. The survey results that we got from our employees when we asked them what we thought were the pertinent questions on this topic. Some focus group meeting report outs, and members, leaders of our focus group here as well to take over at that part of the discussion. And then we'll talk about next steps and timeline. So as a refresher, Senate Bill 1444, districts participating in TRS Active Care previously had to stay with TRS Active Care previous to that Senate Bill passing. And in fact, when the legislation passed, TRS needs to be notified now by a district who chooses to get out by 1231 of each year, which is effectively nine months in advance of the new plan year. The benefits plan year always starts September 1st, or has for some time anyway. If a district is opting out, we need to remain out for five years, so it can't be a decision that we don't take seriously, because whatever we choose, we're committed to in terms of getting out. At this time, the legislation allows us to make that decision to get out year to year as long as nothing changes in that legislation. But once we do get out, we are out for at least five years. And then we can elect each year to make that decision at the end of the calendar year. So in response to Senate Bill 1444, TRS Active Care moved to a regional rating system in the 2223 school year in order to financially sustain the plan. So long story short, they were spreading the average cost of participation across the different regions of Texas. And Region 11, being a little bit a higher-cost region than maybe some other sections of the state, undoubtedly got an advantage in that particular approach. And as we were carrying the average cost in our premiums and our co-pays, when in fact, this is probably a much higher-cost region than other districts might, where they might be located. Those rates were to vary by region, and in fact, those rates have been modified to be region-specific. And as I mentioned, Region 11 would likely to see increases as a result of our location. However, what actually occurred was that the state of Texas stepped in and covered that increase for this year. So the impact that employees felt was muted or neutralized a little bit, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the rate didn't increase and that the subsequent rates wouldn't be incremental to that that employees have not really felt yet. And that's a significant point. So we tried to put together the pros and cons of opting out of TRS or staying with TRS. And this is much of the information that we also shared with the members of our committee as we went through our committee meetings. So from a pro perspective of opting out of TRS, you know, there's a possibility that we could achieve lower premiums with a different plan. Obviously, there's more freedom in plan design if we're either in a consortium with a smaller group of school districts, or if we're in a self-insured plan, making those decisions for the district itself. And then option of ISD Health Plan Consortium, which is in fact entirely different set of information that we'll cover here going forward. From a con perspective of opting out of TRS, as I said a few moments ago, you have to stay out for at least five years. Current providers may not always be covered. When people get healthcare providers, they understandably get very attached, whether it be their PCP, or whether it be the particular hospital they're used to going to, or the system that they're in for that matter. And there's no guarantees, and it's almost assumed, that some employees would have a change in providers, and that can understandably cause some frustration. And then the rates may also be tied to things that they haven't been tied to in the past if you go to a different plan, which could help with cost, but can be change if nothing else in terms of what employees are used to. And in this example, could be tied to wellness decisions. Obviously, never tied to something that an employee couldn't control, but something that was within control, or those elements that are within employees' control are in fact used sometimes in plan design with respect to premiums. fact used sometimes in plan design with respect to premiums. A pro of staying with TRS, no financial risk to the district. It's carried by TRS itself. Employees familiar with the plan. Everybody's obviously used to it and knows what to expect. And then it is one of the largest insurance plans in the country, let alone the state. And with that size comes the advantage of negotiations and contract cost with providers, whether they be at our Blue Cross or whoever. From a con perspective, we know that premiums are higher. The inference I made a little, or have been higher. We know, the inference I made a minute ago is the unknown of what's coming next year is probably stair-stepped on what we don't even feel yet because the state covered that cost of the transition to regional pricing. Rates are based on districts, other districts and regions for which obviously we do not have control. And then can't opt, cannot control plan choices. So if we wanted to say, you know, there's some things we think we could do and that even our employees might be fully in favor of doing, you're trying to influence a much bigger organization and make those changes. And the larger the organization, obviously, the harder it is sometimes to get consensus. So the district's approach to trying to get to a consensus of the recommendation that we would like to make to the board was first to educate our staff. And we launched an internal website that included a short video, a frequently asked questions document. We hosted some virtual office hours to make sure we were available to employees who just wanted to have one-on-one conversations through the benefits group. We surveyed the staff and launched that survey to gauge the employee experiences, thoughts, and preferences back in May, and then we analyzed that survey. And then we held focus groups that we were purposeful about the proportionality of the employee representation. It was by design that we had people from all parts geographically of our district as well as by position type. And we'll show you that participation, those folks that participated here in just a moment. Our first session was back on May 17th, where we really just tried to dive into the details of this fairly complex subject. Second session was on 6/20. The team and the participants have done an outstanding job of engaging. I'm pleased to say that. It's actually a pleasure to go to those meetings for me because it's a subject that I'd like to have buy-in, and there's a lot of engagement from the people who are participating. We shared the survey results in that second meeting, and then the third session, just July 27th, to see if there was some consensus on how the group was feeling. Really not as a, the question for this stage one, I'll call it, was never to ask the committee to tell us, do we recommend the board to stay in or stay out? We tried to take this in a two-phase approach, which is first educate the complexity of the subject to the extent where we could say, is this something you even want to consider? Is this something you want us to dive deeper into to get comparative pricing between what would likely be the option, whether it be a consortium or whether it be a self-funded plan? Is it something that, because my opinion is, it would have been premature to go too fast. And while we have very hardworking, well-meaning people on the committee, I don't think it would have been reasonable in a period of three meetings to say, yes, we're recommending to stay in or stay out. So the question was, do you recommend, based on what you know now, that in fact, we should proceed and go much deeper and get very specific cost information to the best of our ability and very specific plan information to the best of our ability so that the recommendation can be made to the board of, well, now that I know that it's this percent decrease, yes or no, that it's this change in healthcare network, yes or no. And while some of that will still be generalizations or assumptions, that level of detail is something that we thought was necessary before a final recommendation was determined. So the survey results that I mentioned a moment ago that occurred back in May, I believe 1,835 employees actually completed the survey, not a bad response rate. Eighty-six percent of those participants are enrolled in the plan, which by definition means that 14% were not enrolled. I actually infer that to be a good thing. It tells me that people who are not currently in our plans still have interest. And if we offer the right product, we may be able to serve our employee population more so than we are today. And then you can see the breakout. I won't read the chart to you, but you can see the breakout of what plans they were in. What is notable, if you have the backstory on most of these plans, is that there's a huge deference to the lower-cost plans. That first one, for example, is the high deductible. And so people are taking, and you'll see the survey data that supports this even further on a couple slides after, are taking those options that are most affordable to them from a premium perspective. Why did you elect this plan? We straight up asked, and you know, it's overwhelming in terms of the lowest monthly premiums. So it's not necessarily because I'm happy with my physician or its lowest out-of-pocket maximum. It's just, it's the premiums. And that was the overwhelming response. We bracketed these responses when we looked at this chart because when we asked, how satisfied are you with the premium costs overall? It was interesting. It's kind of all over the place to some degree. And when you bracket it, you see that it leans a little bit towards dissatisfaction, but it's not overwhelming either. So they're choosing the plan based on cost, but ultimately, that lower cost, they've either become accustomed to, or there's not a high level of dissatisfaction, which gives us a little bit of a mixed message, right? How satisfied are you with the co-pays? Again, bracketed it, and very dissatisfied about 40%, and balanced satisfied about 42. So my inference from that would be, it's a toss-up in terms of concern over co-pays. How satisfied are you with network availability? Most people like their networks. They like their doctors. They like the options that they have. It leans heavily in that direction, 62% to 20%. How has your experience been with the pharmacy benefit? Interesting that there really isn't much concern here, except for the first thing that steps in is that the cost is too high. So it's a little bit of a recurrent theme when it comes to cost, even when it transitions into a pharmacy benefit where most people are happy at the availability of the prescriptions they're able to receive. If you don't participate in the plan, why? So this really is that 14% of our respondents that are being able to answer this question, and 75% were related to cost. And then we asked them to rank in order of importance those words in white. And you can see that number one rank by far was the premiums in terms of what's important to our employees and the co-pays. Would you be interested in an alternative healthcare plan? That's kind of where the rubber hits the road. And fairly similar to some of those other questions that showed some on-the-fence balance, we've got 31% yes and 29% no, and then we've got 40% that aren't sure. And I will tell you that the thing that concerns me most and why it's so important to me personally that we're making sure that the people who are affected by this have a voice in it, is this decision, one way or the other, won't really play itself out until after it's made. And what I mean by that is that the TRS Active Care rates are typically published just before the summer. That's too late to change for the impending September plan, right? Because we would have had to decide back on 1231. And if in fact, there's a sandwiching of this year's cost increase and next year's cost increase, and it's not muted by a contribution from the state, I'm concerned about the burden on employees. So we're doing our best to communicate those possibilities and let people give their inputs with eyes wide open, considering the other downsides of change and possible differences to plans. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and introduce two of our group representatives, Kevin Canarium and Richard Waller. Both have been extremely active and helpful participants, and I'm going to let them take it from here with a few slides and give you their experiences as members of the focus group.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing us to come speak to you this evening. It's been a pleasure serving on this focus group. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about the group of people you see on the screen. This is the focus group that's met three different times. And you'll see that there are teachers, and those teachers are spread out all across the district. You'll see specialists, but you'll also see a few administrators. You'll see transportation, food service, maintenance. They're all represented here. In addition, what you really can't tell from here is that these people are also spread out across all of the different options in the health plan. There are even people on this committee who didn't take healthcare for one reason or another, and they were part of that discussion. I think that gives us a very good, solid working group, and we've had some really lively discussions, and a lot of great points were brought out that I think all go to the different things that we've been told about what's coming. And we have all their opinions, and we think we've made some pretty good decisions with the information we've been given.
So as a member of the focus group, and there originally was going to be three of us speaking tonight, one of our partners had a family emergency that she had to take care of. So it's just, you're just going to get to listen to Richard and I. But as members of the focus group, there are several things that we took into consideration. The first one being that we recognize that there are different needs of our population. And the challenge that we really faced was that there's no single approach that's going to make everybody happy. So what we're looking for is the option that is the best for the most people, basically, is how we concluded that.
While the planned premiums were offset by ESSER funds for the 2223 school year, employees are likely to see a significant rate increase in the following year. And that, we were just hearing about that. There's probably a pretty good chance that there will not be ESSER funds to cover this year's increase next year. So our employees are going to see that increase, plus any increase that would happen normally next year. And that together is probably going to be pretty devastating for some employees if we can't come to a better solution.
And as we looked at it, and as the numbers that you saw from Scott were that the premiums and cost-related concerns were really the highest interest of the teachers here in the district, is what is the cost? What are the premiums? What is coming out of my pocket? So we took that into one of our major considerations. And as a focus group, we have come to the decision that we do believe that it is in the district's best interest to actively pursue and develop some alternative plans. And the specifics of those plans will, you know, provide further information and better background as to what the preferences of our employees and members of the district are as it relates to TRS Active Care, whether to stay in it or to exit into one of the alternatives that we found. So, and in relation to that, the recommendation for the next steps following this as we go into, I guess, that'd be the third phase really, where we've, what do we do now, is first thing is human resources would further develop and review whether it's a self-funded option or a health plan consortium as to what the best alternative might be to TRS Active Care. And then also, after that, we would present the plan to, and the specific alternatives to a district-wide employees through large focus groups, through additional surveys, with that information that's provided to be specific to the plan alternatives that we have chosen and how that compares directly to the TRS Active Care. And in addition to that, those of us on the focus group would also be, help to support the facilitation of these larger employee group meetings, mostly because there is a, there has been a huge learning curve with this in understanding what comes from TRS, how is all the funding work, all those kinds of things. So we would be there to be, continue to be the employee's voice, the staff voice. We would also have any additional, or we'd have some additional focus groups. And in those groups, that's where we, as the focus team, would meet to compile and analyze the district-wide data, to get what's coming from the employees' input and understand what employees are really wanting. And then once we have gone through that, then we will present the final findings and the recommendations to the board. We're looking at sometime in November, December, definitely before that December 31st deadline.
Okay, so ultimately, the board is going to have to decide whether to stay in or to exit this healthcare plan. And so it would be the board's choice, but that choice would have to happen by December the 31st of 2022 if the district intends to withdraw. And that would be for the TRS Active Care plan for the 2324 school year. Okay? Which one? At that point, if you do choose to withdraw, then the alternative plan would be for the, would begin on 9/1 of 2023. If we stay in, then we would just continue with the TRS Active Care effective 9/1 of 2023.
So with that, we just want to thank you for your time. And any questions, anything that we can answer for you, we'd be more than happy to on behalf of the focus group and HR.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this may be a better question for Mr. Cale, but it looked like from the charts, and you said it a couple times, that some of the feedback was a little mixed. But something that would be interesting for me to see as we go and evaluate the alternative options, which I think, I think we definitely should look at our other options and not make a decision, you know, without doing so. But I was interested to see that there were folks who were pretty satisfied with the choices that they have. If there's data that cross-references among the various plans in those responses, and can we tell, are there particular plans that people in those plans seem to be disproportionately happy compared to other plans? Because I think a consideration, if we have that data, and it turns out that there's, really, it's a plan selection issue, is, you know, maybe something weighing in favor of staying with TRS is we incentivize employees who aren't happy with their plans to move to the plans where people seem to be happy. Does that make sense? And does that data exist?
Yeah, it makes sense. That level of data doesn't exist at this point. It doesn't mean we can't ask for it in a subsequent survey, which we plan on anyway, to get deeper into that. My impression of the results, based on the comments you just made and the subject you're approaching there, is that people are satisfied in general, not always, in general, with the care they're receiving in the plan and the network options and their doctors. There does not appear to be any substantial level of dissatisfaction with that. What there does appear to be some dissatisfaction about is cost, as that's a constant theme. It's where the deference is in terms of plan selection. They're not choosing the plans based on differentiation of care or quality. Not only from the survey and from inputs and conversations, do I rarely hear frustrations about quality of care or options. What I often hear frustrations about are the cost. And then you can see in the survey results and the slide of the selection of the plan is toward the high deductible. So we can certainly ask more questions to see if we can get more, a deeper dive on plan satisfaction. I think that's a good idea. I would anticipate that we're going to hear pretty consistently, I'm okay with my coverage, I'm not okay with the cost.
And in cost being, because the response for some of these seemed to be more focused on premiums, is cost encompassing deductibles and not just co-pays and premiums?
Cost, what came out of the survey was employee focus is on what I think they feel most often because these conversations are involved, and they focus on premiums and they focus on co-pays. The other real cost element that I'm not sure had an opportunity to surface, maybe if we asked questions a little deeper, it would, is out-of-pocket max. Because, you know, that's a whole different issue when it comes to what hits your checkbook or what ends up on a credit card, because the out-of-pocket max is too high. And I've heard lots of discussions and examples of people who are frustrated that they pay what they consider to be pretty substantial premiums, only to never hit a deductible, and certainly in some cases, not hit their out-of-pocket max.
Right. Okay, and that would be good, I think, to look at next time around. And I don't know the answer. I mean, and I know Dr. Raj and, you know, Mr. Hogg, when he was on the board, are more involved in this area than, you know, I have any possible knowledge of. But it'd be interesting to me if, you know, one reason you might not choose a high deductible plan is because you're worried about getting hit by the high deductible. But if it turned out from our survey results that people are choosing the high deductible just, you know, mainly because of the premiums, but then it turns out they're actually pretty satisfied with the overall cost, if care is, you know, a wash, you know, I think that's a significant finding that would inform not only whether we stay with TRS, but what options we'll go into. not only whether we stay with TRS, but what options we'll go into alternative if we choose to go that route.
Yes, sir, understand.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Kell. Thank you so much to our focus group. Just want to say how much I appreciate, as chairperson of the Finance Committee, who also serves with me, Justin, Mr. Chapa, and Mr. Will Banks. Thank you for previously meeting with us and then explaining this presentation to us this evening. I think one thing that we've gotten out of this is we appreciate the method of moving forward, and particularly starting with the survey to get answers from those who really will be impacted the most. Very excited, once again, about Senate Bill 1444, because it's now giving us a chance to look at those options of what it would look like to not be forced to be just put in one thing, but have an opportunity to kind of vet out how maybe we can make it more affordable for our employees to be insured. And from the survey, that was read loud and clear, and I don't think that was new information for anyone, and as a board, I know in the past, we've tried to do what we can to help offset some of those costs, you know, anything that, that we could do financially. So, I'm really excited about the continuance of this focus group and the information that you will be bringing back to us as a board as far as actions. The one thing I do just kind of want to point out is, I'm glad that you pointed out and put in writing, and I hope will continue to be said as you do your surveys and have your meetings, the point of the ESSER funds right now covering some of the cost, because on some of these surveys, for instance, would you be interested in an alternative health, healthcare plan, knowing what you're paying now and knowing it might be kind of high, but not really realizing how high it may really be when those ESSER funds are not supplementing that cost? I think this is a very important variable as we're getting feedback from our employees. So, once again, just thank you for the work that you're doing, thank you for continuing to do the work, and looking forward to the additional information that you'll have to provide to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Ms. Mays.
Whoops. Ms. McMurrough?
Thank you, Mr. Kell, and thank you, Mr. Nairn and Mr. Waller, for your work on the committee. I really think our, this has already been said, but I think that the next steps are headed in the right direction. I really like what you said, Mr. Kell, about the, the employees affected must have a voice, and that is, this is something that affects their livelihood, their wellness, they have families to take care of, and the survey results, there were some surprises there for me, but the fact that you said that the dissatisfaction li, lies with the cost, you know, of course, as a board, that gives us heartburn, and I can tell you my own experience with TRS, it's a different story when you're single, healthy, fresh out of college, but then when you, you know, you have a spouse, you have dependents, you're going to see a huge difference in the cost, and I would argue to say that with most folks, that's, that's really when you need, you know, the cost to, you know, be feasible. So, the survey, even though there was more satisfaction than I expected, the dissatisfaction with cost is where I really hope that we can, you know, let's keep that at the forefront. I do like the idea of casting a wide net and looking at other options. I appreciate, you know, not just the focus group, but the fact that there was a survey, and there will be a future survey sent out, correct? My question, I know that open enrollment might still be going on, has that window closed yet for this year?
Yes, ma'am, it has. It just closed, I think, on the 15th.
Okay, and this question might be kind of premature, but has there been any, any differences in about how, how many employees opted in for TRS active care this year versus last year?
Yeah, the, the initial numbers, because it is early, it looks like it's, it's pretty flat, it's actually down just a little bit from the initial numbers I looked at, in terms of total enrollment, maybe down a couple hundred. I, I don't want to run with that, but that's the last data I saw, it just wasn't final data.
And that's with no change to the premiums this year?
Right.
So, that's, oh, go ahead, yes.
The premiums on my plan went down a few dollars.
Okay.
Because of the ESSER money.
Right.
So, the plan I participate in, one of the plans actually did drop a little bit.
Right, but there were no increases across the board, right, this year?
It, it was effectively flat in terms of premium increases, because they were covered for the most part by the, by the state.
That's right, okay, okay. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, only about 50% of employees, year-to-year, opt in for TRS active, active care, but we have to ask ourselves, well, why is that? You know, so I just was curious how, you know, this year looked, and it's no surprise there, but thank you for all your work. I do hope that we can consider our options, and thank you for the pros and cons. I hope that, of course, you know, the committee, you guys are very clear on that, and I hope that we can ensure that the folks taking the survey, they also understand that, because that's, that's something, that was a new learning for me. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Quick clarification, because I think it's important in this context, because a lot of people discuss ESSER funds, these are not our ESSER funds, because in the district, we talk a lot about ESSER funds, these are the state funds from federal government. So, when we talk about ESSER funds going away, it's the state funding and not our own ESSER funds, we didn't, that's not how we can use ESSER funds, just for clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Cavassos, thank you for that, because I was just going to mention the very same thing. Gentlemen, thank you for, for you and your committee's work on this. I know for a long period of time, we've been looking at this, it's too bad that the easy fix on this would be the state going and putting everybody under the state plan, you know, there would be a constitutional amendment that would have to change. However, it's been done, and that would have been a much easier way, and I am fearful because with these ESSER funds, even though your plan went down a few dollars, that is not the, the path that will happen once those ESSER dollars are no longer. It's going to go up, and it will go up significantly. You know, when I look at your 15th slide, which was question eight, would you be interested in an alternative health plan? I'm the eternal optimist when I look at these things. I look at the yeses, which were 31%, and then the maybes that were 40. That's telling me that if you give me a reason, then I'm going to jump with it, but I have to know the reason, because right now, you're, you're giving me a what-if scenario, right?
And we, and we saw that in our discussions.
Yeah.
We talked about what-ifs, and that it was going to go up, the people in the room who were the maybes agreed with the yeses.
Okay.
We saw that in our discussion.
I appreciate that, because they, that's coming to where my points are. I, being in, you know, the private sector, you know, we, we deal with all the majors and, 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 you know, on a rolling basis, are you going to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, are you going to stay with that, no, you go with United Healthcare, whoever it may be, and, and, you know, it's one of those things that you do have a plan manager that looks at this and then continually evaluates, but it, from plan to plan, what, what I remember of, the TRS plans that have been out there, whether it be active care or, or some of the higher deductible plans, those type of things, they pretty much mimic the public plans. You can, you can find those pretty close, so I think that as you do your due diligence, and it's really going to be, I think the significant thing is going to be two things. One, is it going to be comparable, and will my costs come down? And then, secondly, do I have my, can I still have access to my same practitioner's, you know, hospital plan, those type of things? That's generally what I see. I think this next step is going to be the exciting step for you.
Absolutely.
But, you know, I know that-
In our, in our discussions as a group, and the, the information we've been given and we've gleaned on our own, we think that's out there.
Yeah.
We think that comparable plan to what we're doing now is out there, with all, almost all of those providers still considered, and the cost being lower.
Right. I think that as you, as you start to line up these, and you work with a particular manager that's going to potentially broker what, which one of these groups might be the, the appropriate one to go with. To Mr. Chapa's point, I think that you'll find that there's going to be those comparable plans, so absolutely, I, I, again, I just want to reaffirm with you that I do believe that, I like the thought that 71% of people could go to this if, if given the rationale and the choice. To Ms. McMurrough's point, when I was leaving the district, I thought we're about 65% people, employees enrolled, is that, is that high comparably? She was knowing maybe 50% of the, where are we at on that? Do you think that the-
I, I don't want to misquote, it's, it's not as high as I would hope, I, as I recall, it's probably between 50 and 60%.
Yeah, okay, so, very close, and I was thinking that it was between 60, 65%, so, you know, that's still a significant amount, and as you said, 14% of these respondents said they weren't in it at all. So, they're, they're trying to either go with a better plan that may not be optimal to them either, with the spouse, if they have that, or doing without, which we don't want to have happen.
Could I, can I say that, having the discussions back at our campus, one of the things we did as a focus group is, after our first and second meetings, we went back and talked with the employees at our campuses, and gleaned information for them to bring back to the next session. I have employees on my campus who are either food service, janitors, or TAs, who do not take insurance, because it would cost their entire paycheck-
Paycheck, right.
-to cover their family, or cover them and their children, and not even their spouse. Some of them don't take it for themselves, because it would take too much of their paycheck away from their family.
Shows you the great importance of what you're doing, so with that, I'll leave that and say thank you for, for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, gentlemen. It's so important to give the voice to our employees on, decision, so important. As a small business owner, when I had my software company, we're only four of us, and I can think of only one thing that created more contention and more anxiety, and it was when we decided to switch healthcare plans. And I know you guys said it best, we can try to make the most people happy with the decision, we're not going to make them all, but I really appreciate the utilitarian lens that you're putting on this to try to create the best benefit for the most people. And having said that, I sure, you know, the same comment that Mr. Hibbs said about, you know, converting the maybes to the yeses, and I like the fact that you guys had a lot of great discussions on what it would take, you know, to move the needle there, and to my colleague, Mr. Chapa, on, on the survey, I think it's fairly simple query in the data that we already have to say, this respondent is marked that they had this, this plan, and said they were dissatisfied or satisfied, to do those correlations and do a stacked bar chart based on those results. That query should be fairly easy, and if it is, without doing another survey, I'm sure my colleagues on the board would love to see that data, because I, I believe Ms. Mays, in our finance meeting, asked a similar question, and I think that's important information to know, where is that dissatisfaction, which subgroups of our population that responded in terms of where they were with their coverage? So, if we can see that, you know, that'd be great. And that's, you know, most, everyone covered most, my questions, so that's all I have, but yes, I thank you guys for the methodology that you guys are using at this to give the voice to our employees in this very important decision.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. This gives me hope that maybe those employees that you were referring to, that, that our janitorial staff, our kitchen staff, that maybe this will finally be their opportunity to have healthcare for themselves and their family. I think that is so important. I guess maybe for some people, it might come down to, do I want to save money, or do I want to keep my doctors?
Yes.
I wish we could find a way to do both.
And I'm, from what I've seen of the plans that friends in other districts are using, some of the consortiums that have been discussed, most of the doctors are out there on those plans.
Okay.
The biggest difference they're seeing is they might have to use a different hospital or surgical center. The doctors are taking enough of the insurance plans that whatever we go with, majority of them are going to be covered. They're not going to lose their, they're not going to lose their, their primary care, or they might lose a specialist, but not their primary care.
And at the end of the day, that was kind of the, the conversation that we had, is we don't know the answer to that, what we want to find with this is, what is the true pain point of losing your doctors? Because the reality may be, we don't, there's no change in who your doctor is, but we don't know that, and, you know, the idea would be, keep the same or very similar networks, and a significant reduced cost, but as we go forward, that's what our goal is, is to find that information out, so in November and December, we can come tell you exactly these questions that y'all are asking.
And those 29 that said no, they didn't, they didn't want to change their plan, they're, in our discussion group, that primary complaint is, I don't want to change doctors. I'll pay more if I don't have to change my doctor, but that's not an option for a lot of employees, they don't have the dollars to pay more.
Ms. Fowler, one, one last point, if that's okay. I think an important summary of all this is that, in all of the options we've looked at very prematurely, we're not really considering what I would call a skinny network, which is just, you know, narrow, where, oh my goodness, like, I've just got to go here, this hospital. I think most of the options we would look at would not necessarily be a significant change to choices when it comes to a primary care physician or your local doctor. I think the greatest opportunity to control cost are what I would call cost control measures built into the plan, so one example that was just given, and he's absolutely right, I may have to, hard time keeping up with these guys at this point. But one of the, one of the things that's built into the, into the, one of the consortiums is that hospital cost, because that's where, that's where the big-ticket item, cost, is. And so, you know, strep or those inconvenient things you get, and you go to a local doctor or a local care facility, those are really, I think, going to be seamless. But whether it's that example that says, okay, we now have a concierge that looks at quality and looks at cost for a particular procedure, and most people think one hospital's, but it's not, it, it varies by procedure, by hospital, and so a concierge does that, helps you go to a high-quality place that's going to be low-cost, and now you have this cost control measure that's built in the plan, that, that tails down to lower premiums, lower copays, lower out-of-pocket maxes. But there's also other cost control measures, some which are more adversarial, some which more, less receptive to most people, some neutral, but there's different things you can do to say, for example, kind of a middle-of-the-road neutral, you know what, if you actively participate in a wellness plan, your premium threshold might be here. If you just choose, I don't want to do that, your premium threshold might be here. I'm not advocating for that, I'm saying that's an example, and because with that comes the risk factor, and the outcomes, and everything else, and so, when you have a large plan like TRS, I actually want to give them a little bit of credit for a moment, they're trying to turn a battleship. They're trying to make a lot, we think we're trying to make a lot of people happy, they're trying to make a lot of people happy, and, and with that scope of size of, of a plan, it's very difficult, in my opinion, to get consensus around, sure, let's put a new cost control measure in here or here, but whether it's with a self-insured plan that the district owns, or whether it's with a consortium, which is a much smaller group of, of districts, there are a lot more flexibility to say, we want good, high-quality care, we don't want a lot of impact to our, to our network, but we're willing to take some cost control measures, because otherwise, there's going to be no result. It's really not even about, is it Aetna or Cigna or Blue Cross, because they're the face of it, but the real cost savings is built into the things that come with what it means to have cost controls that you might not be as familiar with today, so.
Mm-hmm.
How'd I do, guys? I do okay?
Fantastic, appreciate you.
I would say that I unfortunately did have a, a, a significant event this calendar year, and I met my deductible, and I met my out-of-pocket, and I was looking at how much it costs to do this here or this there, because it was affecting how much I was paying. And eventually, I get to the point that I'm not paying, and TRS is paying everything right now. And eventually, I get to the point that I'm not paying, and TRS is paying everything right now. And the doctors, and the hospitals, and the surgery centers will say, you don't, it's not costing you anything, and they won't discuss how much it really costs with you. So they're not letting, they're not letting the employee know that information, because it's not a concern for us anymore. So it, we're kinda going into it blind when you get to that point. You can't do those cost-saving measures on your own, you need the plan to help you with it.
Good point, good point. Mr. Kell, committee members? Oh, I'll let them go first. Dr. Rice?
Uh, thank you, President Fowler, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate the information. And I echo what my colleagues have said, it, it really is, uh, the, the focus on trying to do the best thing for the employees here. And, and obviously, from the employee perspective, uh, looking at what the, the cost is typically the underlying, uh, factors. I do wanna make sure that, whether it's in the conversation going forward with further committees, or just, uh, Mr. Kell, to finance, uh, for the board, we also have to look at what that cost is to the district, which is what you were just talking about a little bit. Because that's going to be, that's, that's the risk exposure, right? Uh, at least for the first few years. Um, and if it's a negative exposure, or, you know, if it's two years, we're like, oh, my gosh, then we got another three to, to sustain that. So I, I'm saying that as a setup, basically, to the, the next two questions, which is, just looking at it from a, a higher level, um, the, the migration in this region, I don't recall, I know we had talked about that when I was on finance, uh, as far as the, the districts in this region, who, who has opted, or who is looking at taking that option? So I was a little bit curious about that, just in general, as well as, uh, if there was any movement at all last year. And the reason I'm leading into this is, um, we talked about the dollars that are being covered right now at the state level, and the, the fear that's gonna go away, the, the premiums are gonna go up with TRS active care. But I would also hope we're going into legislative session with, right now, a reported twenty-seven billion dollar surplus. And there, so in my mind, I'm thinking, is it the right time where maybe we are going to get it, a, a stay of execution, if you will, for another biennium? So I, I wanted to put that out there, do you and get your thoughts on it?
I, I, I think that, I, I don't know the probability legislatively of whether or not the, the state, obviously, is gonna come forward and, and offer those funds.
Sure.
I, my concern is actually on the flip side of that coin, which is the concern of participants is going to be diminished right now, because there's a little bit of a false sense of security. And whether it's for this year, or whether it's for a couple of years out, what I do know is that the cost has gone up because of regional rating, and we haven't felt it yet. And what I do know is that the cost is gonna continue to go up from a, just a COLA or a cost of living adjustment. And then you filter in, well, I'm not an economist, you filter in what's going on with the economy from an inflation perspective. You know that that's gonna hit healthcare, just like everything else, it's gonna hit everything else. And that's a little bit of a perfect storm that says, we could really have some shocking adjustments. I can't swear to that, but it does seem like those pieces are coming together. I think that if the state were to support us for another year or two, um, that would certainly be helpful. Although I also think there would be some element of pushing or kicking the can down the road, until it's finally gonna be a reckoning day. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're basically going through the same motions that I am. I mean, that's, it, it's kind of the, the crystal ball thing that we all love. The, yeah, the uncertainty or probabilities, what the legislature's gonna do, who the heck knows, right? I, uh, I'm just, I, I'm concerned, because for us, from a governance perspective, fiduciarily, we're gonna have to really look at our budget. We're, you know, we pass a deficit, there'll be corrections to that, but not as much as what we were able to look at previously. ESTR shrinking, same kind of thing. So we've, we've gotta be very sensitive to that.
Sure.
So that we're not, uh, that what we're losing from the state's contribution hits us real hard when we're already trying to squeeze what's likely gonna be the situation the next few years.
Understand.
That's all, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Uh, Mr. Kell, I, I just wanted to take a moment to sort of give the historical background of how we even got to this point, to be able to be in a position to, um, make it potentially a choice in, in December, and how much of that has to do with work that you and your staff did, and the prior boards did, to even get to this point? Because I remember the first few years that I was on the board, one of the biggest concerns we had were the escalating TRS costs. And, and we were locked in, and there was no way out of it. And in, in a couple legislative cycles ago, this board made a concerted effort in their legislative agenda, uh, which was informed by a lot of work that you did, to try and get some change done in Austin. And we even got to the point of working with some folks, uh, in, in Austin to get a bill sponsored in both the Senate and the Texas House, um, to create an opt-out with a bracket that was essentially for Arlington ISD to, to become a pilot program or do something different. And that bill failed, but what it led to was a lot of conversations that you had with TRS and some other folks, and it got a lot of attention around this issue. And the next legislative cycle, there was a bill passed that gave districts the option to, to get out. And so, in a lot of ways, the reason that this board and other school districts across the state are being able to even entertain this proposition, um, at this time, is because of hard work that you and your staff did, and the prior boards did. And I just wanted to point that out, because I think that is something that, um, this board pushed for, uh, for a very long time. And it's interesting, even if we end up making a decision to stay with TRS, uh, we have something that we didn't have just a few years ago, and that's, that's the ability to make a reasoned decision on what we think is best for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Anyone else? Mr. Kell, Mr. Nierman, and Mr. Waller, thank you so much. We appreciate all the, the input, and probably the hours and hours that you and your committee put into this. I think it's great information, I think we're moving in the right direction. Like I stated earlier, my hope is that more employees will be able to have insurance, and that we can bring down that cost for the, for all of our employees. And I think we're, we're moving in the right direction, and I thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
We now come to, um, the open forum for non-agenda items. And Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered? Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We are now ready for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler, and I, uh, share a couple of pieces of information here. As you know, we started school Monday, so we'll have some pictures here. I was fortunate enough to make several stops throughout the district, it was, it was a great day, a fun day. Whether we're greeting students at Jones Academy coming in for the first time, the P-Tech program at Lamar High School that everyone was excited about. Uh, it was great seeing so many students and staff members, um, that were excited about Monday. Uh, we got to learn some things, I'm not sure what we're doing there, but a puzzle or something. And, and it was just really exciting, and staff and students were really motivated. I talked to some students, eighth graders, and then we took a picture with the whole admin team at Owlesley and, and places like that, and keep going through some of those. And so I just wanna thank everyone for a very, very good start of the school year. And our students in particular, because they're back, and they're engaged, and they're excited, and, uh, so are their teachers and their principals. And so I just wanna thank everybody in the district, because everybody has a part in this, as I've shared so many times. Uh, it takes a team, and we're a team in Arlington, and it takes all of us, board included, to have a, a, a great start to the school year. So thank you so much. And everyone was excited about the school year, and our reaction to our back-to-school kickoff at AT&amp;T Stadium on August sixth. So you see, uh, some of the pictures there, there were students and parents getting ready for their backpacks, full of school supplies, haircuts, uh, some vision, uh, screenings, um, and some vendors that participated. And, yeah, what did we see? What's in the picture there? Oh, look at Dr. Rice, that's right, we, that's right, we tried to include something. Uh, there you go. So, uh, thank you to, to everyone who came and stayed and had fun. Thanks to a local radio station, ninety-six point three, the teachers at Bryant Elementary got a treat before school year started. The staff was surprised by two of their radio personalities and dozens of cupcakes. For their teacher appreciation t, uh, tour, more than three hundred schools submitted a form to have a chance, but only a few got selected. And Bryant fifth-grade teacher, Ann Cooper, I don't know how many applications she submitted, but they won, and they got this, and they ensured that the school was starting off to a sweet start. So thank you so much for, for that. Congratulations to six of our new Richard Greene Scholars for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, the six represent our traditional high schools, and are honored in the field before a Rangers game. Each of them will receive ten thousand dollar scholarship, as well as an internship and mentorship opportunities. Since nineteen ninety-seven, we've had a hundred and thirty-eight students honored, and they received more than one point three million dollars in scholarships, thanks to the Texas Rangers and the Richard Greene Scholars Program. So congratulations to them. Thank you, Dr. Hill, for representing, you didn't know we were gonna show a picture there, but, uh, thank you for representing us, uh, that evening at, at that event. Well, we're gonna keep moving. All right, so, um, before I wrap up, the last item, I think it's really important, the last item here that I have on the report, it's a little ad lib here, so look out. But, uh, I wanna circle back to the first day of school. The question I got asked the most were from elementary students about our playgrounds. And I remember a ditto, they were so excited, because they had phased two playgrounds. And because we planned things accordingly with Kelly and everybody else, uh, it was the first day of school, and they had temporary fencing that place, uh, that first day of school, and they were taking down the playground. But they were so excited that they weren't gonna have rocks anymore, and all this kind of stuff. At Crow Leadership Academy, you know, it was even better, we, they actually, the principal said, hey, let's go to recess, and let's go see how those playgrounds are doing, how the kids love it, and all that. Well, we did all that, and it was great at Crow. And, uh, and they, you know, we tried, because recess was over, and we tried to get everybody back in, in school. And we had one that wouldn't leave the swings, just wouldn't. And so, Spence, do you have, yeah?
Yeah.
Look at that. He just would not leave the swings. Is that right, Kelly? Yeah, Kelly didn't know we were filming that. Look at him go.
Did you give the kids a chance?
No, no, he, there was a line, and Kelly wouldn't get off, Kelly, come on. Anyway, anyway, I'm kidding. Look at that, we, you'd never know what's gonna be in this report, Kelly. It's a de-stressor, okay. So, uh, there you go, so Kelly was having a great time, all of our staff was having a great time. So anyway, thank you, Kelly, and everybody, for making such a great start of the year. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Any school board members with a report? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, um, President Fowler. So, uh, in the theme of back-to-school, I, I wanna do a shout-out to the Rotary Club of Arlington, which has a tradition of, uh, showing up to greet all the new wallabies as they start their school year at Webb, and hand out pencils, and talk to parents about the scholarship program they offer to parents. So, uh, thank you to, uh, our president, Victoria Farah Myers, and everyone who showed up, including a police officer that covers that area, Dr., uh, doctor, Officer Valle, uh, who also handed out pencils and was a big hit. He got more requests for photos than I did, so. Uh, no, but anyway, it was a great start to the school year. It was great to see the excitement on all the kids' faces, and I, I think it's a, just a propitious sign for the school year to come.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Anyone else? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, we do not, thank you.
All right, it is eight forty, and we are adjourned.